I'd like to call the June 29, 2017, meeting with Board of Education to order. First item, invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Out of sight. A tree is nothing without its roots, and for the most part, they do their job underground. Young roots absorb water and minerals from the soil. Older roots take these materials and send them into the stem. In order to keep the tree going during dormant periods, the roots store food, similar to the way a bear builds bark to get him through hibernation. Food stored in the tree's roots provides energy and food needed when the weather changes and it's time for new growth. Trees never stop growing. As long as they live, some type of growth is taking place. New roots are forming, new branches are appearing, or old bark is being sloughed off so that new bark can take its place. Without the roots to lend mechanical support, act as anchors, and store food, a tree would fall. The God who cares enough about trees to set up an intricate feeding system for them gives each of us the food, water, and air we require to survive. He gives us family and friends, opportunities, and provision to accomplish His plan for our lives. We can't see God with our physical eyes, but like the finely-developed web of roots beneath the ground, we know He's there, working on our behalf. That is His nature as Jehovah Jireh, the God who provides. Have you ever been hungry? Jesus is the bread of life. He promises that whoever comes to Him will never go hungry. Have you ever been thirsty? As Jesus told the Samaritan woman at the well, "Whoever drinks the water I give him will never thirst." Do you ever find yourself gasping for breath? Job knew who to thank for the air we all breathe. In His hand is the life of every creature and the breath of all mankind. Stay rigid in the Lord and watch Him provide for your every need. Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, approval of the agenda, but before I ask for approval, I would like to move Item K, the public comments session, to Item B2, and I would like to delete Item G, to extend the superintendent's contract because we have not finished his evaluation yet. Are there any other changes that the Board would like to make before I ask for approval? Okay, since no other changes, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item B, 2017-18 Audit Contract. Pete Cattelfamo?
Yes, Mr. Pete Cattelfamo. There's just a few items I'd like to build on the audit contract. Audit contracts rather lengthy because they require issues that we have to address in terms of our professional standards. First item, I would like to have a contact. First item is unchanged out of the audit contract. It's the fee to audit accounts, and our fee here is $23,463, which is a 2.46% fee increase, sustained percentage increase as the prior year. On the engagement letter, this is attached to the contract to audit account on page three. The second paragraph, page three, addresses communication matters, and we've put in a contract that we would communicate promptly to the superintendent of the Board Chairman. That way, if an issue that arises requires immediate attention, we don't have to wait for the upcoming board meeting. On page four, under the Other Services section, this deals with non-audit services that we will be providing. These were an addition to the audit services, and it specifies in that first paragraph, under Other Services, the non-audit services we will provide, and the second paragraph below that addresses the limitations of the non-audit services. Again, these are all required by our professional standards. Under Management Responsibilities, on the same page, the last paragraph, there are four items that management is responsible for performing if the auditor does non-audit services, and all those four items are identified in that last paragraph. And one of the requirements for non-audit services is that management designate a member of senior management who's qualified, has the necessary skills to review the non-audit services that we provide, and we've put in the audit contract that Lori Trussell, the finance officer, has been so designated. We believe she's probably the most qualified person to do it, and last year, she provided that service and did a very good job. On page six, the third to the last paragraph, the first paragraph under Engagement Administration fees and others, we will have to use a third-party service provider in regards to our non-audit services. We're not allowed to rely exclusively on management to review, evaluate, and accept the non-audit services, so we'll have somebody that's a retired CBA that come in and review the financial statements as well. The last item is on that last sentence of page six. We permit a two-way communication between us and the Board of Education, so if any member of the Board has a question during, while we're doing the audit, please feel free to contact.
Do you want to mention the total cost and the increase?
It's a total cost of $23,463, and it's a 2.46% fee increase, the same percentage increase as the prior year.
Does any of the Board have any questions for Mr. Cattelfamo?
I don't have a question for him, but I have a question. I mean, and would all do respect you and your company. My question is, have we put this out for bid, or do we just use the same company every year, or did we compare the price?
We did put it out to bid four or five years ago.
Yes, sir.
Four. And what the Board decided then, since the next nearest auditor was, I think it was Greenville, that we decided if we could keep the, close to the same price and keep it within the county and support the county, you know, people, that we would do that.
I totally get that. I was just curious, and the only reason is because it's a substantial amount of money. It's just moments, you know, we'll be trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for everything else. And I'm not saying it's not worth the money, sir. I'm just asking if we did the due diligence to make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck. That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying you're not doing a good job. I'm not saying it's not working. Just inquiring to see if we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. And I don't know that every five years is reasonable. I don't know that it's not. But when we spend money at my house to the neighborhood of that kind of money, or anything close, we compare it. That's all I was asking.
I wish my house had a $40 million budget.
Mine doesn't, but we spend a fair amount of money. Sometimes we go beyond our means and we try to make sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck.
Understand. Understand. And if the Board would wish, you know, we can bid it out next year.
I still feel the same way, that we need to keep our money in Currituck because the Cattafamos are paying taxes in Currituck there. I just feel like we need to keep our money in Currituck locally.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we need to vote on the 2017-18 Audit Contract. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item B2, Public Comments Session. Megan Botelli, signed up. Megan?
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to say real quick, it wasn't an agenda item. This is my first time at a board meeting. Good afternoon. My name is Megan Botelli, and I'm a parent of two children, one that attends the middle school and another at Jarvisburg. I'm here out of concern regarding the administrative turnover that I've seen in both schools in my short time in this district. We, as a family, will be entering our third year in Currituck County School District, and in that time, my daughter at the middle school has had two principals, and will be receiving a new assistant principal, and my son at Jarvisburg will be on his third principal. Principals after teachers are an important part of creating our children's academic experience. They set the climate and setting of the school, encourage our teachers, and help our parents with, all within, result being to be able to provide the best environment for our children. With the constant administrative turnover, especially at Jarvisburg, how is this affecting our staff and children? With each new principal comes a need for our students and staff to learn to accommodate, adjust, and accept a new way of the school environment, only to have a change in less than a year at times. Jarvisburg opened its doors in 2008, and since then, will have its seventh principal in nine years. While teacher turnover rate is always a great concern, what concerns me in my research is that our teacher turnover rate, district-wide, runs comparable with state with an all-over average of 13%, but our district principal turnover rate is 20% compared to the state average of 9%. Our district also has no principals with over 10 years' experience. I would hope that the Board and Superintendent's Office also sees this as an issue that needs to be addressed right alongside the teacher turnover rate. It was recently commented that the district is losing teachers to better-paying districts, but is that the case as well for losing administrators? Or are there other reasons that can be looked at and addressed to keep our administrators in place? The district is expected to report to the State Department of Public Instruction why teachers are leaving, but I defy no report on principal reasons for leaving. The revolving door of administrators can only negatively affect our school, staff, and ultimately, each children. I would like to thank the Board and Superintendent's Office for allowing me to voice my concerns and hope that it will be raised for further discussion.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Botelli. Just to reiterate your point, the Board is very concerned too about administrative turnover and teacher turnover.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I'd love for you to speak with me at some point in time or email me your data. I'm very concerned about that as well. I couldn't write down everything you said, but you had a lot of numbers there that were very interesting, and I'd like to study that myself.
Okay, next item. Item C, Fiscal Year 2016-17 Budget Amendments. Ms. Trussell, Finance Officer?
Yes. We have a run-up new budget amendment, the final budget amendment for this year.
I just passed them out because they are hot off the press. We wait each year to make sure that we have all our budget covered, and we wait till the last minute to do it so that the auditor does not find us to be out of compliance. For state, we had an increase of $209,000. The bulk of that money is in summer reading camps. Those funds always come in late. For local, we had no increase or decrease. It was just moving some money around within the functions. For federal, we had a decrease of $161,000. Majority of that was in improving teacher quality. Somehow, we had a software glitch, and when we did the original budget, and it wasn't caught until after we did the first budget amendment, the budget double-posted. We didn't spend any extra because we already had it set, and our software vendor doesn't even know how it happened, but that's the bulk of that. So we had reversed that and corrected it to the actual amendment, actual allotment. Capital outlay, we had an increase of $43,378, and then a little bit of moving among the function codes. The $43,000 is, the first came up on the two new school buses that we received this year. And again, that's not actual money that we get, it's just something we have to book. So this is the money that we're required to book on our books. We never hold any cash. We don't get a check. It's just a booking entry. School nutrition, I increased the indirect cost line because I thought it was getting close and it might go over, but I did not want to get written up for that. And then in Fund 8, we received an additional $230,000. That is impact aid, Medicaid, cost settlement money, sales tax refund, and some other small things. And that money rolls over each year, and we use it to fund technology. Any questions?
Does any of the Board have any questions on the budget amendments?
So is the other local fund that I'm seeing, I guess, $1.24 million, is that what we are saying we spent out of the local fund balance? Is that what that is?
No, sir. This is another whole fund that is grants. It has the JCPC program.
Okay.
Impact Day, well, Impact Day is just a revenue.
That comes from the military students that we have to serve?
We've collected insurance settlement for Hurricane Matthew.
I see it now.
Grants are there too, right?
Yes, it's got grants, got Currituck Kids, Knights of Columbus.
So is this money tied to a certain funding?
I thought that's what you were gonna ask. It's all designated for certain programs that operate, and it's not part of the local budget. So it's pre-K, NC pre-K, the JCPC programs, the ARCs council.
I see a couple of them listed. I was just curious. So they're specific to those, is what you're saying? That's how the money has to be spent?
And we do put our indirect cost collection in this part, too.
Okay.
How many budget changes did the state make this year with us?
Last allotment revision, because I verified that today and make sure nothing had come in that I didn't have posted. It's 58.
58 changes? Okay, any other questions for the budget amendments? Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we accept the fiscal year 2016-17 budget amendments? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next item, Approval of the School Nutrition Paid Lunch Equity Tool. Ms. Trussell?
Okay, now I'm gonna just go ahead and say that I'm filling in for Angela, and I do not, most of them, I do not know that much about this. She put together a PowerPoint and Paul. It's basically something that we're required to do since July 1 of 2011, and we have to charge as much for our meals as close to what we're reimbursed. And if you don't hit the weighted average, then you're required to go up at minimum of 10 cents. And I know most of you have heard this present, Howard Angela, she can explain it much better than me. And if you go...
And this is required by the federal government, USDA?
Or we would not receive their funds.
Right, right.
To the sixth. One more. This shows, and it's not showing up good, but this brings our weighted average up to the calculated weighted average, and it covers the increase in food each year, the labor increase, the maintenance of equipment. This shows the history of what we've done. It's increased 15 cents.
No increase last year.
10 cents, 15 cents. We had no increase last year. And then to the final page, it's recommended that we increase 10 cents.
And we have to do at least the 10 cents to be in compliance, correct?
We have to increase it in order to get the money refunded.
In order to be able to receive the free and reduced funds from the federal government.
We were on the verge last year of needing to make an increase, but we had made increases so many years in a row that Angela made contact with the state, and even though the recommendation is, if you're nearing that point, the recommendation is to raise prices rather than not, they said that it would not be a violation to stay pat last year, and so we did a year with no increase, and just tried to make sure that the budget could handle that in the Food Service Department.
So I'm understanding this clearly. The federal government is giving money for lunches for people to qualify for their services, on a condition that the people that pay for the lunches, that can afford to pay for them, don't qualify for their services. You have to collect that much money or more?
In other words, they don't want it, the federal government does not want to be subsidizing the paid meals, the meals that people pay for. That's really what this is all about.
I just wanted somebody else to say it.
Is that true? Yeah, Sean Tane works in Chongqing.
Okay, so I just, okay, just wanted the people out there to understand what's really going on with the money.
Any other questions, comments? Because we could raise it a quarter, but I wouldn't suggest that we do that. I would just say raise it the minimum, which is 10 cents. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion for approval to raise the prices 10 cents?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, do we raise the meal prices 10 cents? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, School Nutrition Charge Collection Process. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. Working in collaboration with our school nutrition director, Angela Rodriguez, who, by the way, is attending, couldn't hear, she's been out of town, and to any rate, we're all kind of standing in, but we've worked collaboratively to create some processes that will help the public understand how we go about, one, allowing charges, and, two, what are we gonna do to recoup that. Just as a little bit of a framework, last year, we had about $18,000, is that correct? $18,000 in charges that at the end of the year must be accounted for because they can't carry over negative balances in school nutrition. So $18,000 was taken from local funds to be able to zero out their balances. $18,000 is almost, well, it's at least half of a teacher assistant by at least today's rate. So we've made it a mission to really work hard, and I have to give credit, we're credits due. Angela did a great job working with phones. Sean Tane would help with reports. Our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, everybody pitched together because we realized $18,000 is a lot of money that we could put towards other things. So collectively, they worked, and based on some of the best practices that they put into place, we wanted to put something in a more formalized procedure. So I've given you a copy of those procedures. They're already linked as a draft to our Procedures Manual online, and you'll see that this is, because of the efforts everybody put in last year, we were able to reduce the amount of local money that was needed to be able to balance the books in school nutrition from $18,000 to $10,000. So that was an $8,000 effort. So again, based on some good practices where we found we had a lot of positive results at the school, we developed these procedures, and we tiered them so that there's, we work at the school level first. They're the people that we know, the families closest, and have the most frequent contact. So when it gets to a certain level where there's a charge approved, then we're gonna make contacts, and we have that process outlined here, more or less on a weekly basis. When charges haven't been paid out, and it reaches between $50 and $25 and $50, then it's gonna move to the next level where the principal's actually gonna make contact. If after those kinds of contacts are made, and we still don't have any kind of contact back from the parents where they tell us that there's a hardship, and we can enact our social workers or counselors to try to help the family to be able to get the paperwork filled out for the free and reduced, if there's a hardship and a financial burden on the family, the principal will help to kind of initiate that. If after that, if we don't hear from the family or set up some kind of payment plan then, Angela will get involved as well because we'll make phone calls and send out letters through the US mail system to be able to make sure that they actually have it. Elementary folks are more likely, or parents are more likely to check with bags, read stuff that we've done home and take them home. Secondary kids, not so much. So sometimes when we've mailed home the letter saying you have a charge of the thing amount of $50 or more, whatever, parents are like, "Oh, my gosh, I had no idea." So that we found to be very effective. After we get to that point, then it will move up to a district level where a letter will be sent from the Superintendent's Office to say that this is, the charge is owed and whatnot. And again, try to work with people that payment will work with you. And Ms. Rodriguez said that on multiple pages. She was able to reach out and make payment options for families. So what we're gonna propose is that when it gets beyond a certain level, we did a little research to find a collections or a recovery of charges. It's a profit recovery firm that will work with us as kind of the end of the road. And when we've put our due diligence in, and we've made all these efforts to contact and work with parents, then we're gonna turn it over to someone that doesn't work with the Currituck County Schools, and they are in North Carolina, but they would kind of then pursue the collections outside of the district. The research on this, the collections company is Transworld Systems, and attached to the agenda item today, I've given you kind of the pay scale. It's a flat fee. They have a minimum number of subscriptions or accounts that you would have to purchase, and obviously, the more accounts that you purchase, then the cost savings is there, and it's reduced per account. The minimum is 50, and so based on that minimum number, I asked Ms. Rodriguez to run me a report to tell me how many accounts do we have and charges that are between $50 and $100. We have 48. 48 accounts that are totaling a little over $5,000. So that is about half of the $10,000 that we have put towards the charges. For $800, we could, we have the potential of recouping half of what we've done already. These accounts will remain on, they'll remain open with the company for two years, and there is a guarantee. And there is a guarantee after two years that you'll recoup at least half of what you put in. Again, if they put in 800, then they're going to guarantee you, they'll just double your money back. They are currently working with New Hanover, and they just began working with them in January. As part of all of this research to try to find a way to recoup our lost people, money. Evette Jones sent out an email last to everybody, all the superintendent's assistants, and was getting a lot of feedback from everybody. And interestingly enough, while those people didn't have a company that they worked for or worked with, everybody was like, I think we're going to have to try to do that. I think we're going to try to do that. So it's part of what we're looking at. Again, we're not prepared to make a proposal. And at $800, we wouldn't need the board to approve a contract with this company. But in terms of the sense of the board, if you want to pursue this, because it can, you know, it can sometimes take on a negative tone with the community. However, right now, any negative tones are being really directed at our staff. And the time and effort that they're putting towards trying to recoup, that can put a bitter taste in somebody's mouth that we're pounding them about this one. So that's where we're at with this. So I'm open to suggestions and comments.
I just have a question about what happens to the child that owes all this money when they go through the lunch line?
We're still feeding them.
Are they still getting a regular lunch?
Yes. There's now, there's now a, the state or federal?
There was a, just like, no, there was a state law that was going through the bill process to get there to have a copy of that.
Right, no consequences for students, ever. And so it's about, you know, contacting parents for the money that the students get to go through and there's...
And we're not discussing it with them.
They get their lunch.
We're not discussing it with the students at the cash register.
Well, I have to be honest with you, though, that as we were trying to brainstorm, how can we, how can we, you know, get the incentive out for parents to pay us back? And we were thinking about, you know, we're going to hold them back from being able to participate in field trips that were extra. We were looking at having to say, you can't go to the dance if you work.
That's not fair to children.
Well, and that's what we've landed on. And again, with that piece of legislation being considered, it's right. It's not about the kids. It's not the kids' fault. It really needs to be directed more to the parents. And again, this process really does take it out of the kids and puts it on the parents to say that we, this needs to be paid off as your responsibility.
I'm glad to hear that they're not getting a different lunch.
No, they're not. And that's in our policy, by the way. And all of this is linked back to our original policy that takes the operations of school nutrition. And in our policy, we have a, that no child will be denied a meal because they've forgotten their lunch or they don't have the ability to pay. So we're just going to work through the process and define it clearly, not how we're going to do it.
And that discussion is not happening at the cash register either?
Again, that's written in the policy too.
I thought it was, but I just...
That's pending as well. Well, that's part of the new rule, just like you're pending as well.
Right.
Has anyone, I mean, I heard you say, I guess, reached out to other school systems. But did they possibly check with Dare or Chesapeake, Virginia Beach to see how they do with their problems? I know Virginia Beach has so many more schools. I would think that they would have a substantial problem compared to what we think is substantial. So I'm just curious as to what came behind it, you know?
And the most, everybody that she heard back from, they weren't doing anything at all. So again, we latched on to this particular company who offered the services that we knew they were getting their feet wet with New Hanover. Some of the other districts, some of the larger districts do utilize an actual collections agency. And others will take, they will take out the bills owed and go to the magistrate. And they're able to just simply swear out.
I didn't know if there was a way, you know, like, I know Easy Pass, for example, I know it's not tied to your license plate, but somehow, I know if you don't pay them, they'll attach to you.
Taxes.
On your vehicle. I didn't know, I'm not saying there is, but there might be some avenue that way that cuts out them and goes right to a source where you might likely be paid without having to pay. I don't know.
Okay, this is an administrative procedure, which you don't need action on, but you want us to be able to say you would support the collection?
Because, yes, sir. And because this is going to be something that is going to be publicized and put into the handle for parents, and that's going to go to print before August. Again, we want to make sure that you're aware of that and would support it because of the fact that if someone gets angry about it...
Right, right.
And how much money is it forward goes into that?
$100?
$100? So what are you talking about?
And we could back it up, and we can go between $50 and $100. And again, there's a cost benefit there because you're paying $16 for the account to be retrieved. $50?
So you're paying $16?
$16.
$16, I'm sorry, because I didn't see that she, nor did she, I don't think. But $16 per account, no matter if they owe you 50 or 1,000?
That's correct. And we have some accounts right now that are up to $300.
And that's just for this year? Because we pay it off at the end of every year, so we don't know about previous years?
We're going to, we've extracted that information and we've captured it so that we can carry forward. And so those accounts, once we've set up an account with this company, if they pay it off, but then they call back in arrears, then we don't pay for it a second time.
Suppose that we looked at, and we are contacting them again, at the $50 range. And in that letter, suppose we said that if it goes to 75, we'll be passing it on to this...
That letter will have that coming along.
Okay, so I think 75 would be reasonable. Instead of waiting till 100, you're giving them that opportunity at 50 because by the time they get the letter and then they discuss it and blah, 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 you could be looking at, if you've got three children, you could be looking at another $25 or $30. So 75, then, you know, maybe that would be the incentive to go ahead and get it taken care of.
Well, if you have three children, though, and you're talking about $2.60 a meal, in one week, they're going to be at 75.
But that's what I'm saying. You at least get that letter out and then, yeah.
I just wondered if that would be enough time for them to come up with the money?
And again, everything...
If they contacted us, could make an arrangement? Yeah, I see, okay.
I think we had a discussion a while back, and I think it was along these lines about unpaid lunches at some point. Didn't y'all say that typically that was in the higher grade levels? That the higher amounts were?
At times, the high school can have some significant...
So typically, like, the parents aren't knowing what the kid's doing and stuff like that, and they're running out of the bill.
I think we may have mentioned that she wasn't going to let the kids attend the prom if they had outstanding debt.
That's just our way of encouraging them to pay off debts before they buy their prom tickets. And it's amazing what happens.
When I was, they told me they wouldn't let me graduate because I didn't pay for the freshmen, sophomores, seniors, junior, senior dudes. But I didn't attend any of the functions, and they were trying to bill me my senior year. I'll let you know how that worked out.
You know, I would support the $75.
Yeah.
Dawn would care.
As long as we get that letter out quickly and say, either contact us or, you know, we're going to be...
Every contact in writing will have that.
I know, I know.
So it will be reiterated there. So it's everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yes, well...
And you're okay with us then moving forward with contacting Transworld and being able to set something up with them? Very good, thank you.
Okay, next item, report on possible Crete County High School daily schedule modification. Ms. Doughty?
In a perfect world, if you could give something to teachers in this district, what would you give them?
More money.
More time.
Time, and what else? And now? So more money costs you money. Less students costs you more teachers, which costs you more money. What's the one thing that doesn't cost you money? Giving them more lunch.
It won't cost money.
More time. More time, something that we do have some control over. And having worked at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, there's a distinct difference between the amount of time for collaboration that happens at an elementary, middle school level and what happens at a high school level. And it's been really hard to adjust to and see. And so we're at a time where we are now working on building a master's schedule for next school year, debating, we change things up dramatically last year with a hybrid schedule, trying something different. And anybody that knows me knows I don't do the same old thing very often the same way. So we're at this point where we're looking at, how do we provide more time for staff? So what I've come before you today to just give you an idea to look at, as principal of the early college, one of the unique things that happens is that we have time dedicated every week for the intent of being able to collaborate. Those early release Fridays provide time for staff to really look at what they're doing for their kids. And I think that some people look and say, well, early release Fridays benefits who? And the argument would be, it benefits the teachers. Well, we don't make decisions about what's best for teachers all the time. But what's best for teachers in this sense, to provide this time for collaboration, will really impact what's best for students. And so what I ask for consideration today is for us to look at the ability to look at early release Fridays, much like what happens at NAP with their early release Fridays, for the intent as which NAP has it working right now, to really provide time for deliberate collaboration for students and for student growth. If we invest in teachers, we invest in students, hands down. So what you have before you are some survey results, Mark sent a survey out to staff somewhere around June 1st. And what you read on those notes are quotes, feedback from staff. And then what that expectation would look like for what early release Fridays would look like for us. Tagged to that, you see a spreadsheet calculating instructional hours, much like we have to provide, every school provides for Sandy, calculating instructional hours, keeping in mind that the state sets a minimum of 1,025. So I just provide that with you, for you to take a look at. Because again, it's doable. We've contacted Transportation, talked with them, because my big concern was, is that going to cost the district money? Because again, I'm not about trying to cost any more money. I know how tight everything is. Jimmy indicated that that would not cost more money. In fact, Friday's the most called out day for bus drivers. So if we ran an early run, it would provide a chance for drivers to then run and fill in the gaps where he's having his grounds to get folks, where he's driving himself buses on Fridays for some of the elementary or middle schools. So again, I don't know all the numbers behind that. I just simply threw it out there. If this, what would the impact be to you? I was also concerned about our Corolla bus because we do have Corolla students, and it's impossible to drive to Corolla, drop off, and be back to pick up everybody else by that 3 o'clock time frame. But there are two Corolla buses that run, and so they are aware of that and said that that's not a problem. The Jarvisburg bus would pick up the crazed up middle kids, and they would be on as if nothing ever happened. It wouldn't impact child nutrition as far as scheduling. That all stays the same. We have an early release day scheduled anyway for those days that are already built into our calendar. We're not asking for Fridays in addition to the Wednesdays that are already built into the proposed calendars for next year. We'd actually just slide those Wednesday early release teen times to Friday in hopes that if it's approved, we can call NAP and say, hey, what are you guys doing professional development wise? Is there a chance for our folks to collaborate with you? They're doing great things there. Maybe there's something that we can pick up from them and what they're doing on their early release Fridays. So in a nutshell, I think if we invest in teachers with this time, then we'll see a bang for our buck with our students.
I would really support this, because I like novel ideas like this, and I know what happens at NAP. Question, makeup days. Are makeup days impacted by this schedule, especially if we take too many days for snow and hurricanes or...
Sure. Well, I think, and so I cheated first, too, I should have told you that. I don't like presenting anything to you that I haven't at least talked to myself about. So I sent a quick survey out to staff to say, look, I'm going to go to the board, pitch this crazy idea. What do you think about this? And so we gave them a chance to put pluses and deltas and start giving some quick feedback so I can have something to roll on. Because the last thing I would do is come pitch this idea, and they're like, really, that sucks, I don't want to do it. So they asked about that. Like, what happens if we have a Hurricane Matthew again in the fall? Well, much like that, when you need to make up hours, they take those Fridays and rotate them back in too. Now, NAP has more flexibility than we would because there's no seat time specific to them, and they get, have some calendar flexibility. But at the end of the day, we would take those Fridays, if we had to, convert them back to instructional hours and the half days and go on about a regular school day. We still could use Saturdays, dots, forbid if we had to.
We're working district-wide to come up with a remote learning protocol.
Yeah.
So that we can reduce that. And it might not all be online, but we're working on a protocol that would allow all of us to be able to... I mean, this was a terrible year for weather, so, and having that ability at the secondary levels to utilize the Google classrooms and the training that we're doing on that, I think we have a stand a much better chance of lots, reducing losses.
Right, not losing as many hours.
I know some students have an attendance issue. Is there any possibility of makeup time on these Friday afternoons?
So that was one of the things that staff members posed in their feedback for it, is like, could this time be used for after-school detention, for behavior issues, for remediation or intervention time? And those were all would be things that we can work out to say, what I don't want to have happen is it not be used for staff collaboration. Because this has to be dedicated professional development and dedicated collaboration to say, we've got kids who are at Tier 1 and Tier 2. What are we doing to meet their needs? So if I have TAs, for example, that may still be on the clock because they need their eight-hour days, I have TAs that I could say, hey, can we run this over here with after-school detention? And maybe we'll run that. Can I have a TA work with an intervention group? Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, does the North Carolina High School Athletic Association still require a half a day on Fridays?
There's no attendance. It's HSA defaults to the LEAs for all attendance.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. That's a new change as of last year.
I can see this being very beneficial. And the only thing that I do see is what it will not look like. One thing there, it sounds as though they wouldn't be able to catch up at all with grading. And I certainly wouldn't want it to be the whole half-day grading. But I do know, I do think our teachers are just putting in crazy hours trying to get everything done. And so it, I'd like to see them have a little bit of catch-up time.
What we talk about, that vision for me is it's a calendar. And again, I don't know how it's structured at NAP anymore, back in the day, way back in the day. It would be a rotation. So it would be a PLC Friday, and then it would be an MTSS Friday, then it would be a department something Friday, and it would be an individual Friday. Get caught up on grading and grading.
Great.
So during these early releases, I heard you say that in nutrition, I guess lunch would still be served?
Yes, sir. It still is right now on our early release days.
So what time would they be getting out?
12:05 is our current dismissal time right now. That's our last bell. Lunch is served from 12:05 to 12:30. 12:30 would be the actual dismissal.
I'm pretty sure.
But students do drive.
So everybody in that whole school, he's from 12:05 to 12:30?
Because about 350 of them leave.
Okay, all right.
On any given...
On any given day.
On any given day.
On any given day.
Okay, all right. And at what time, if it wasn't early release, would they get out?
3:10. Same, it changes nothing to our school hours right now.
I see this...
All right, so, but we're still paying to heat and cool that building as if it was used for a whole day. And we're still paying that gas and that wear and tear on that school bus that feels used as a whole day. So why not just switch the calendar around instead of having half a day raid? You know, because everybody's going to come in, they're really not going to do half a day's work for work. Because that's how it works in the real world. When people show up late at my work and leave early, we joke around with them, we call them half a day raid. You know, because you're not going to get much. So what I'm saying is, why don't we go and just structure the calendar such that we don't run the buses on certain days? We don't heat and cool the building on certain days? And then the teachers get a whole day? And the kids don't...
You can't do that. We don't need 1,025 instructional hours.
Well, okay, maybe not a day for two days, but maybe a day for three half-days. I don't know, but I'm not in favor of a whole bunch of half-days and you're still spending the money for the buses and the heat and cool the building. So we're really talking about saving money and not spending more money. Now, I think we should get a full day for the full cost of heating and cooling and running the buses.
But the teachers need this more often than just a day here and a day there.
The students need to be in the classroom.
And I think you're right. But I think it also provides an opportunity for us to extend what learning really happens. We worked with CTE and talked with Don about internships for students, talking about giving them field experience, job shamming opportunities, which again, are great experiences that do extend that classroom beyond the four walls.
Yes, ma'am. I just think that what you just indicated about it, but leaving out of there at 12:05 rather than saving for 12:30, I think the predominance of that is we're probably not going to be doing that. going to be doing those things.
I think...
Well, don't the teachers still have, what is it, a 200-day contract that they have to work, 215, so they have to work, and so if you let them off, there's no way they can meet their contract.
I think it might also...
Well, first of all...
Talking about not having the students coming, not running the buses and...
That's happening at NAP right now, anyway, so they can share that with you. But also, Ms. Dowdy did that, she's not just coming up with this out of the top of her head. She ran that school.
We're not stealing ideas that we know work.
I think it may have a positive impact also on attendance, in that students, if they need to schedule a doctor's appointment, or they want to go and look at a college, they could use this early release on Friday afternoon, I, you know?
All of these Fridays?
Not, well, I mean...
All of these, right here in this column? All of those?
They could, when they needed to go to the doctor, or go to our college. I think they'd set it up on Friday afternoon.
Well, I think it's also important to keep in mind, between my junior and senior class...
Well, they got Saturday and Sunday.
I have about 240 students who are already on a modified schedule. We already have at least two of these bells off every day, not just on Fridays, but every day.
Because they've met...
Because they're on a modified schedule.
They've already got their credits.
The teachers still have to be there, so you still have to run the heating and air conditioning.
Okay, well, we won't save on that one, but we'll definitely save on the diesel fuel and the tires and all the rest of it.
I think, I think what you're maybe confusing it with is what we discussed earlier about summer, and having the summer the three-day.
Oh, I'm not confusing, I think we should do that in summer and out of the school on Friday.
But we can't, because you're not going to get in your, you're not going to get in your instructional...
We're taking action.
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't saying we did it for every Friday. I'm saying, in lieu of doing a whole bunch of early release days, maybe we have a few non-days for the students.
Yeah, well, that's how it is now, but what she's, what Ms. Dowdy is comparing it to is what JP NAP is currently doing, and it's working.
Yeah.
So, when she's...
And their scores are showing it's working.
It's working, and so, we're going to need to look at county-wide, what is working?
Uh, okay.
And maybe shadow with some of these ideas.
Well, administratively, you can implement this without us.
Without us.
You just want our support for this...
I guess that would kind of be important.
Well, I, yeah, my support for it.
It would constitute a calendar change.
The board does have to...
Okay, they have to, yeah.
So, we would have to...
You would have to approve the calendar change, and so, we would have another calendar for second.
Well, I support it.
I do, too.
I do.
I don't.
Okay. We have four that support it, so...
You need action then, to...
To make the calendar change?
Yes.
Do we need to wait until you've fixed the calendar, or do we need to do it right now?
Because basically, what it is, is taken every Friday. I mean, it's just exactly what she said.
And again, I think, well, and I don't know how the logistics behind this things work. My, my want to come to you is to say, can we proceed with really fine-tuning this and making this look like something that would be for next school year? I can map out and show you more of what that's going to look like for those Fridays, if it makes, you know, any difference, and really put some nuts and bolts in place. Again, still gathering data from teachers about what this could look like for them. I just didn't want to lie inside you and be like, hey, in August, guess what, never mind, we're going to play by a different calendar, so please take this through. I think it's important that you be aware of kind of the nuts and bolts and the rationale behind it moving forward.
And I think it's about notification to parents and the community, to make sure that they're understanding of that. But, again, you need to be comfortable with what she's laid out and putting it into the existing structure, because the only thing that's going to change truly are the Fridays and the middle-of-the-week early release days moving to a Friday.
Yeah.
That's all that's changing, all of the bare bones of the start time, end time.
Everything.
Everything else remains the same.
So, you're saying that we do have to...
And there are traditional high schools...
Okay, do I have a motion that we support the calendar change in order to approve the new CCHS daily schedule modification?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Me.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next item, approval of the superintendent's performance bonus. Each year, he's, presents two goals that he needs to work towards in order to achieve his contractual bonus. This year, one of his goals was to implement a drug awareness partnership with Crete County Sheriff's Department and possibly the State Highway Patrol that will increase the educational programs and enforce presence at CCHS, JP NAP, Crete County Middle School, and Moyac Middle School. The second bonus, formalize the school improvement process at each school to ensure compliance with state law and to maximize educational achievement, district-wide minimum achievement target for all programs. Eighty percent of students will attain proficient status or better on the in-course, in the grade, and other state mandated assessments. And the board has discussed these goals. Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's performance bonus?
Hold on, I'd like to do them individually.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not going to vote the same for both, so I would like them to...
Okay, not a problem. Okay, the first one, to implement a drug awareness partnership, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Second, to formalize the school improvement pass, process, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. So, both goals are approved. Okay, next item, approved field trip request, this information from the superintendent?
I had a couple of requests right towards the tail end of the school year, and we have a couple of opportunities for students, various groups over the summer. CCHS, Memphis State Track Meet, on the 18th and 19th. We've got Air Force JROTC going to Charleston, South Carolina for...
Citadel.
Well, they're going to Citadel, but for a...
Leadership.
Leadership program, June 11th through the 18th. FFA has two opportunities over the summer, State Convention, June 19th through the 22nd, and FFA Camp from July 10th to the 14th. A lot of these occur on annual basis, great opportunities for students, and so, we approve those trips.
Okay. Next item, adoption of the 2017 spring policy updates and special legal reference update. Superintendent Stefani?
Yes, a couple of times a year, we get the packet of policy revisions from our North Carolina School Board Association consultant. This year, the packet was very weighted with just technical changes to line up with State Board of Education policy revisions. So, the content of the policies or the intent of the policies didn't change, so the recommendation even from the North Carolina School Board Association was to put these on one reading, because the policies actually didn't change. Some of the footnote references changed, some of the references to the actual State Board policy, numbers changed, and none of the language in the policy changed. We did have a couple that did have some pieces that the board needs to approve. One of them was a wellness policy, and I'll let Mrs. Kinzel talk about the goals that every district is mandated to put into the wellness policy, and then we've got one or two others that we want to mention.
The wellness policy, again, was a collaborative effort between Ms. Arrington, Dr. Williams, Ms. Bradrakers, and I think Ms. Shatton, the part of the SHAT committee...
Yes, I am.
The advisory, School Health Advisory Committee. They need on a regular basis to discuss wellness-type activities that center around nutrition education, physical activity, and promoting healthy lifestyle habits. So, within this particular policy, this was, it's aligned with, and it was interesting to see on the PLE PowerPoint slide, this is all aligned with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, which is the federal laws that dictate this, along with a state policy, State Board's policy on healthy acts with children. So, within the policy, again, we've always had the SHAT, we've always had these discussions, but specific goals are mentioned and are required to be a part of the adoption for this policy each year. And so, there are nutrition, education goals that are filtered in within that, and as well as some marketing goals to help us to capture a larger audience and larger student participation in our school nutrition programs, again, because we're putting efforts out there to make sure that it's attractive, that it's tasty as long, as well as being healthy, so that we can get them into those healthy eating habits. So, those things have been specified within that policy.
I have a question about nutrition. This, I think, came to play with the former president's initiative, actually, his wife's initiative for nutrition. And I think at that point, at the high school, they were not allowed to serve anything even after school for so many minutes, am I right? And I know that the kids are getting out at 3:10, but they can't buy snacks from the store that the student government is operating until a set time, and even then, it's only healthy stuff? Is this nutritional policy that you're talking about going to have any effect on that? I mean, can they go back to selling?
It's not going to change anything.
It's not.
That's still part of it. In fact, there's guidelines in here for like, healthy party snacks, and we're still held to the guidelines set out by the federal government in terms of the timeframe, because it becomes a competitive foods issue, and that's what that's...
Even after school, it's really a shame, it cut into their profits big time.
Well, Shante, don't we have a, we've got a modified policy for the high school, and isn't the high school one, it's locked right into the last bell, isn't it? There is no, there is no waiting period at the high school. There's a waiting period at the other schools, but there is no waiting period at the high school. They've got a special condition put on there.
So, after school, they can serve whatever and sell whatever?
No, not whatever. It still has to be...
Yeah, yeah, not whatever.
The time, the time gets relaxed, but it still has to be all that stuff.
Nutrition.
It still has to be...
Nutrition.
Which is why they're all like Kevin's at 7:30 in the morning.
Sweet tea.
3:30 in the afternoon.
The 12-layer cake doesn't...
Exactly.
It doesn't meet those guidelines.
Yeah, it doesn't follow.
And by federal law, this has to be passed by tomorrow, correct?
Wow.
Okay. Did you say there was one or two others that you needed to...
Yes, sir. Another revision to the policy and an opportunity to, we would get out there, student permission and accountability. This is one of the most revised policy I think we have in our books. But, just a small change into the section B where it talks about student promotion standards, it still referenced specific attendance standards, and we revised that policy and made it more of a problem-solving model. And so, we changed the language there to reflect that students must meet teaching standards, essentially, what the teachers are grading, but also have to demonstrate actuated, aspirated level or course content in the review. I want to take this opportunity to reiterate and to clarify in some cases that our attendance policy does not remove the compulsory, compulsory attendance laws that are in place at the state level. And interestingly enough, we still have parents that are being cited for...
Yeah, it's in the paper this past week.
So, that's something that needs to be kind of separated, that we're going to do our problem-solving, but that doesn't, it's not removing the steps that are in place for social workers to make home visits, be contacted by letter, and for it to actually be referred to the magistrate in the event that truancy is an issue. So, I just want to be clear on that, okay? Because that was a question that kind of came up from the, from the social worker, actually, that was still involved. So, I want to be clear on that. The second thing that we added and changed, or we did add to this particular policy, kind of stemmed from a situation, an individual case, where a student was interested in being promoted at the high school mid-year. And in the middle of this policy, there's a chart that outlines the specifics of what the requirements are, what courses that students will have had to pass in order to be considered from a freshman to a sophomore to, you know, a junior and so forth. So, when they, at the junior year, when they become juniors, if they've met qualifications of a 3.0 and they task certain prerequisite courses and assessments, for that matter, then they become eligible to participate in the career and college promise, and they can start taking courses at COA. We wanted to make sure we had something in policy that kind of outlined that if there's a mid-year promotion, that they will have had to meet all of those guidelines and have the requisite GPA and the prerequisite testing that would allow them to enter those courses. So, we added that language in there since we were already in a revision, okay? Lastly, a brand-new policy that came to us, Mr. Stefani had shared from our attorney's guidelines that came from Arrington Smith about the use of our automated text and home system. There are some guidelines out there that restrict its use in some ways, that there's informational, and then there's emergency calls, and it kind of gave us the, just the criteria that would meet either one of those. Making a phone call on behalf of, you know, just PTA selling candles, and we want to make sure that you buy some, that's no longer going to be allowed. It has to be aligned with the school's mission and vision, which is about getting parents involved. So, of course, those kinds of things can still be sent home, but we just can't use our automated system to be able to do that. It also gives us the opportunity, or it gives parents the opportunity to be able to say, I don't want to get informational texts or phone calls from you anymore, and allows us to be able to opt them out. And our current system does have the ability to be able to allow for that while still keeping an emergency contact in the event that we have to send something out for emergencies. That one was strongly recommended, especially since we have the system, so we went ahead and took School Board's Association's recommendation and put that into the package. And that's it. The rest of them were just notes.
Okay, and you want these all passed without a second reading, correct?
The reason for this is, not because we want to rush this, but again, it's not...
Just minor changes.
...we get it into the policies in our book that we send out.
4400, attendance policy.
Yes.
Isn't that one of one year's proposals?
Actually, that was one that we had already done, and it was on this particular...
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, sir. We did not change anything except the legal reference.
We've already done it, we're now adopting a whole new...
Yeah, these are any change...
2420.
That reference, it's a cross-reference.
Alright. If it's any change that the State Board made, that our policies have to line up with theirs.
Okay, in order to pass these policies in just one reading, we have to invoke a board policy that allows us to suspend another policy, so, what I would like to do, I would like to ask for a motion to invoke policy 2450, which allows the board to suspend our policies. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that after a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now, we would like to suspend policy 2420, which requires that we adopt policies in two readings at least, and this will allow us just to adopt it in one reading. So, do I have a motion that we suspend policy 2420?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All the policies are okay now. Okay, next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next information items, our next work session will be Thursday, August 3rd, 2017, right here at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00. And our next Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, August 3rd, 2017, at the historic Crete County Courthouse at 6:30. Next item, board member comments and superintendent comments. We'll start with Ms. Etheridge.
I hope everyone's enjoying their summer and a well-deserved R and R. We attended two high school graduations, attended JP NAP early college graduation over at COA. It was a wonderful ceremony, and then Creighton County High School's graduation out on the football field. We had a beautiful night and a lot of happy folks that night. Luckily, it didn't rain this year like it normally does. But I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe summer.
Great. Ms. Crowe?
Yes, I also want to thank you, first of all, for all your hard work for last year and everything you did to make our year successful and to tell you to enjoy your summer and have some fun. And I also, I think I, I did log in three kindergarten graduations in 24 hours. I did get to a few kindergarten graduations, and I missed NAPs because I was out of town, but got to the other graduations, so we had a good time in all of them, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Crowe?
I attended the JP NAP graduation ceremony, along with Creighton County High School graduation ceremony. And I hope all those graduates are enjoying themselves, but not too much. Parents, they're forging the summer, if they haven't already. And I really do appreciate everybody's hard work, and I hope everybody has a great summer and look forward to seeing you next year as not before.
Great. Ms. Rose?
I'd just like to thank everybody for their hard work. I know how hard they work, and it shows. We're doing a great job. They're students. We've got awesome students. Proud of everybody. I too was able to attend the high school graduations, NAP, and the Creighton County High School. Very proud of all of our graduates. I'm waiting to hear great things about all of them in the not so far future.
Great. I too attended both the high school graduations and the kindergarten graduation in Moyac where they had a special ceremony for Ms. Bizbing, who had been there, what, 12 years, as principal?
Yeah.
And anyway, I would like to wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy summer, and do I have a motion for adjournment?
Are you going to let Mr.?
Oh, that's right.
He always wants.
Less I forget.
In addition to the graduation ceremonies, all the children have end of the year awards assemblies, and it's really neat to see students getting recognized for all their accomplishments during the year. But graduations are special because they've reached that milestone in their lives, and to see parents and family members just being so proud that the students made it there. It's just a great day for the students and the families, and then the staff members are to be congratulated for it, taking the students from little five-year-olds and sometimes three and four-year-olds in preschool all the way up to 17, 18, and 19-year-olds that are graduating, you know, and leading them all across that way. It's just a neat celebration for everybody involved. But even though it's summer, there are still school activities going on. And we start our summer reading camps at the elementary schools on Monday, July 3rd, get them started before the fireworks go off. They get to have a little bit of reading activities, and then they get to celebrate on July 4th for the work they do on Monday.
Is that central?
At Central, Griggs, and Knott's Island are the host schools this year.
The answer that the guide to come out for the first hour on Monday.
What time is that? What time is that on Monday?
7:30.
Oh, well.
We look forward to seeing you at Knott's Island at 7:30.
It's so central. So central. I can do it. I can do central. When I leave the Y.
When you leave the Y. I can't believe you're there.
And how long does this program last?
The last day, it's Monday through Thursday, all through the month of July, and we are ending up on the 28th of July with testing on the 27th of July. That's just eight. And we serve the first, second, and third grade students that have not met proficiency in their grade level by the end of the year. So we do give them some additional support. It is funded by the state, and we are staying within our budget, but we have a whole slew of parents that would like to have their kids there that we just can't, we can't accommodate.
Is it a half day?
Pretty much. It is 7:30 they all arrive. We feed them breakfast and lunch, and they have a little physical activity, but the whole day is focused on reading instruction, whether it's small groups or large groups, and they leave us around 1:30, and we put them on buses to go.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.